So ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call our meeting to order. Turn on my microphone and call our meeting to order. It is February 6th, 2018. This is a regular meeting in the Northeast of the school committee. And if I could ask everyone to please rise for the project. Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of Kansas. One nation under God, equal rights and justice for all. Thank you, and if I could, would you please call the board?
Mr. Plaskott?
Here.
Ms. Haskins here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. McGovern?
Here.
The Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Schott?
Here.
And some representatives?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please call a calendar?
On Tuesday, February 13th, there will be a school committee business meeting. And Tuesday, February 20th, there will be a school committee budget meeting.
Thank you. Any presentations or recognitions this evening?
Yes, so we have a few recognitions. First, I want to recognize Meredith Thibault. Meredith is a junior at North Kingstown High School. And she is part of our North Robotics Team. She was named a Dean's List finalist for the world competition for this first, it's all capital letters, first program. And because she exemplifies what a lot of participants should look like, Meredith received an invitation to the World Championships, where she will find out if she is one of the 10 winners up the award from around the world. So she's, and you know, the team also did particularly well this weekend at their first tech challenge in Warwick. So congratulations to her. Congratulations to Coach Rick Powell for planning such a proud program. We had three teams against them. There's a lot of interest in robotics in North Kingstown High School. Also, I mentioned this before, but at the game last night with Hendrick and Kay, Paul Tetro received his hometown hero award from Credit Lohns. Congratulations to him. And our engaged students were recognized around this classic league as the winners of the Battle of the Things. So we have the most enthusiastic student audiences for sports. So good for them. Dr. Here, would you like to point you?
I do. We'd like to recognize Adam with the Liberty. He was a teacher at the high school. He has been awarded the 2016-2017 Northeast Sectional Coach of the Year for girls softball fast pitch. And this represents the states of Connecticut, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, and Vermont. So he was chosen amongst all of those states. So congratulations to him. Stoney Lane is a recipient of a 1,600 grant that is from the Master Gardner Foundation of Rhode Island for improvements to the Stoney Lane School outdoor classroom. And finally, Mr. Garland, a teacher at the high school, has been recognized. While he was mentioned at a gathering for the credit union of Rhode Island and governmental affairs day, he was spoken about in his work with Everfy and the financial literacy by our state leaders. They, he was commended, he wasn't even present. So they were letting him know that he was the talk of the meeting even though he wasn't there.
Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments. Two people on my list to speak. First is Colleen Pickering. If you could please speak your name and state your address. And we always ask you, please leave your comments to under three minutes away.
I'm Colleen Pickering from 35 Rome Street. And I have a couple of comments. My first comment is the school calendar. The teachers are going in for their PD day on the Friday before the long weekend. And we did that last year. And I found that, I was hoping we could move it to the Thursday because we were all at the high school, which isn't everybody's home school. And we learned a lot of neat things. And we were all excited to go to our school. And then we kind of like had to wait three days to go there. So I thought if we could have the teacher day on that Friday, and then the new stuff you learn, you would have time to set it up Friday morning before the kids come in on the Tuesday. So I just thought, put a little consideration to that for the school calendar. And my other comment is kind of as a citizen, I hear people that live to our town, and they live to our town from other states. And they go on Google, whatever, and they see their work in middle school is like one of those top ranked middle schools. So that they choose to live in North Kingstown because of the quality of education that children will get. And I was looking at the budget cuts. First off, I hope we get more than what we asked for because I do understand you're under a restraint just by losing the state funding. But I noticed that there was a lot of dollars cut from the middle school grades. When you divide it out, when you add up the cuts and divide it by the grade levels, like I know the elementary lost a lot, but they have, you know, six grade levels. The middle school has three grade levels. High school did four grade levels. And I found the middle school was really getting hit hard. Twice as hard as the elementary schools. And it's looking like a lot of the specials programs are being taken away from the middle schools. And at that middle school age group, those extracurricular things where they're supposed to experiment, try all the new things before they go to high school, where they have to choose what they like, that we choose what they like without having tried anything. I'm hoping we get some more money, get it back, and we can put back some of the cuts you had. I hope the town doesn't take away any more from you. And when we do get the money back to the town, we want to be generous. I hope we put a little bit more back to the middle schools.
Thank you very much. Next is Joseph Baker.
Good evening, Dr. O'Shea and members of the school committee. My name is Joe Baker. I live at 209 M. Drive in North Kingstown. I would like to start by clarifying my remarks from the past school committee meeting to which I have not had the opportunity to respond to publicly. I believe in transparency and appreciate that the school committee does as well. But transparency becomes opaque when the facts are buried within a 400-page document with a variety of pictures of Quikford Harbor. The facilities of all school operating buildings are important, and we should strive for the best. However, the reality is that the administration has very nice facilities, while there are classrooms without windows in many of the town's schools. And these optics are indefensible. I've also brought a copy of my spoken testimony from the past meeting, since the online video of the meeting does not include my testimony, but I'm aware that you're trying to recover it. Now that those things have been said, I look forward to hearing about the latest revisions of the FY '19 budget. I would like to request that in the spirit of transparency, the proposed budget documents be made available online so that we can see them as well. It's recognized that the budget remains in constant revision, but since we all agree that transparency is important, I'm sure a weekly update would be sufficient. I would also like to report that following suggestions of this committee, I have reached out to the members of the town council to engage them with regards to making improvements to Quineset Elementary. While most members of the town council and the town manager have offered to assist as much as possible, their capacity is limited. So I again request of the school committee and superintendent to make sure that Quineset Elementary is staffed to deal with the numerous ongoing issues. I certainly comprehend and recognize the limitations on funding increases and 4% tax, and implore you to make the tough decisions and ensure that the right priorities are dealt with as part of this budget. The budget proposed at the last meeting unfortunately reduced the overall staff at Quineset. Even with the addition of one behavioral TA, it came at the price of removing one full-time TA and two part-time TAs. The children at Quineset Elementary need you to make the right decisions. They don't get a say in this, no matter how transparent the process might be. As their parents, we are here to speak for them, but the ultimate decision rests on your shoulders. Please don't let the behavioral issues, constant disruptions, or bullying continue. Please do the right thing and provide the school, its students, and its amazing staff with what they need to be safe and to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call some of your recognitions? Yeah, I was gonna say, if anyone else would like to speak, who hasn't signed up? If you could just please state your name clearly and your address.
Yep. My name is Jeremiah Diehouse. I reside at 48 Ashton Avenue here in North Kingstown. I'm the proud parent of two North Kingstown School District children. Full disclosure, one of them is a kindergartner at Hamilton Elementary. So I'm just here to say very briefly to the committee, beyond thanks for the service that you provide the town. I really encourage you to think carefully about early childhood education, particularly the younger grades, as you're considering the budget cuts that are before you and that were proposed in connection with this meeting. We know that what happens in the early grades can have ramifications later in students' careers. And while no one wants to sacrifice the opportunities of older kids for those of younger kids, I'll just go ahead and repeat some of the sentiments offered by the previous speaker to say, you know, there are really important things going on at Quid, also at Hamilton. And I appreciate that you're trying to spare the elementary schools and earlier students, but I really encourage you to think very carefully about cuts you have to make, which affiliate the elementary level.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who didn't sign up? Yes.
Hi, my name is Jake Mather. I'm a father of a second grader at Hamilton Elementary School. I'm the PTO president at Hamilton Elementary School. And I'm an incoming kindergartner.
Could you just state your address?
Oh, sorry, 135 West Hamilton Road.
Thank you.
Here in town. And I just wanted to stress my, the way I feel about arts. And in reading about possible cuts to the arts programs in the middle school, and it really is potentially devastating. The arts, especially in middle school, in the younger years, are when kids start to understand and realize, you know, perhaps what they're interested in. That's certainly why, I'm a local landscape architect as well and a touristy. It's always, it was always my dream since middle school to go to Rhode Island School of Design. But I never would have had the ability, I never would have even known about that if it wasn't for the arts program in my middle school. My middle school wasn't Vermont, and not here. But cutting the arts programs for younger kids can be hugely devastating in, you know, for architects and photographers and engineers and fine artists. I just wanted to stress that. And also, whenever possible, wherever possible, to keep class sizes small enough so that kids can get more one-on-one with their teachers and with their instructors. Anyways, as much as that, thank you.
Thank you. I see someone else approaching, so.
Yes. Hi, my name is Kate Scott. I live at 10 Jasmine Circle in Saunders Town. And I am a first grader currently at Hamilton with a kindergarten. God, how old is that kid? Uh, probably two years from now. And I would like to follow Jake Scott along with the arts. I have a child, a first grader, who loves art, and that's how he gets his feelings out right now. He is not able to say a lot. I'm angry and frustrated. He does a lot of that through his art. And it breaks my heart to think that those programs are going to be cut for him. And I just met these lovely parents from Quineset. And one of the great points they had was spend some time in the schools. I know nothing about Quineset, to be honest. But just talking to them for 10 minutes, not even 10 seconds? If cuts are gonna be made that deeply to that school, spend some time in it. I know some of you are parents in other schools. We don't really know what goes on there as parents until you spend a day, half an hour in the principal's office. Sure, I can do that, but that's not gonna tell me what it's like in my first grader's classroom. So I just ask, before you make such deep cuts, really think about what does it mean on a daily basis, and go into those classrooms, meet those kids, meet those TAs and those teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? So next, I have on our agenda our routine items. First, I ask for a motion to sail our executive session minutes of February 16th, past 18. Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. And were any of you taking our executive session today?
No.
No, so I can disclose that though. Those are taking our executive session this evening. Next, we have our consent agenda. Any members have any items that they would like to exempt? Before we get that far, I'm going to exempt items E. 3, 4, 5, and 6. Any others? E. 2. Any others? If I could have a motion to approve the non-exempted executive, sorry, consent agenda items?
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So the exempted items, first is item E. 2. Mr. Jones, you exempted that.
Yes, I'm with motion to approve E. 2.
Motion to approve E. 2?
Second.
I have a second.
Yeah. You can't deny it. But I think, you know, sometimes we fail to do this, but we'll have these. And whether it's our administrators or our staff, faculty, just take a moment and acknowledge the people who have given, in this case, many years to the district. A lot of time, obviously, and sweat and tears probably too. And just we take a moment to thank those people who pushed that fair wings and followed the seeds.
Yes, so the, what Mr. Jones is referring to is the retirement today is announced for Mrs. Dinet of Quineset Elementary School. Mrs. Dinet has, you know, let me know that she had intended to retire at the end of this year, early on. And she waited until this month to make this announcement because that sets us up for a new search that had not moved time in the March/August timeframe. So I cannot thank her enough. She's been at Quineset through many different versions of Quineset. When it was a 4-5 school and previous to that, for almost 20 years. And she is a tremendous professional. She's a great administrator and a great leader, and we will certainly miss her. But we'll do more and honor her near the end of the year. But I just wanted to give that recognition to my, Mrs. is on the agenda.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving item E. 2? Oh wait, I don't remember which, yeah, I did a motion, sorry, I lost it. All those in favor of E. 2?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is item E. 3. I think we'll take these all separately, it's just easier that way. If I could have a motion to approve item E. 3?
Second.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of E. 3? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is item E. 4. If I could have a motion to approve item E. 4?
Second.
A motion and a second. And any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Actually, I have item E. 5. If I could have a motion to approve E. 5?
Second.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And if you could mark, I'm in the favor, abstain from that, please. Next, we have item E. 6. If I could have a motion to approve E. 6?
Second.
I have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And if you could also mark, abstain from that, please. And it passes. Next, we have approval of the 2018-19 school calendar. A motion for, well, first, if you have a motion for discussion purposes?
A motion to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Dr. Here, would you please?
Thank you. Yes, this is for next year's calendar. We normally do the approval right around this point. And if you recall, earlier in the fall, we entered kind of into agreement with other South County school departments to have some features in common with that. So we're with Eric Anson on this. South Kingstown, we are not. But Eric Anson, Texier Westerbrand, Charo, Wesley, all agree, and Jamestown have agreed that we would start for the students after Labor Day. That we would have a four-day weekend, long weekend, on the President's Day weekend. So Friday would be out as Monday, and that is for teachers and students alike. And that we would take our second semester break in April on this calendar. So those are some of the features. And those are items, by the way, that are pretty much uniform with surveys that we had done earlier, about three or four years ago when we entered into the calendar that had the one-week vacation instead of two in the second semester. And at that time, and that survey was indicating that the preference was to start after Labor Day. I'm gonna ask Dr. Humbert to talk to the concern and Mrs. Pickering.
So being that this coming school year, we have election days, we have a primary day, and we have the regular Election Day on November 6th. Usually, in the past, we've been front-loading two days in order to do an orientation day with our convocation, and the next day have the technology summit. Because of the way this falls, we decided after conferring with a few key people, and I believe the membership was asked informally, the teacher membership, that we would instead separate out, instead of doing front-loading two PD days at the beginning of the school year, that we would do the orientation day with the convocation on the 31st in August. And then on September 12th, being that that is so close to the beginning of the school year, it's right like a week after Labor Day, that we would do our technology summit on the 12th. And then we still have two PD days left. We would do the next one on November 6th, and the fourth one on March, excuse me, 13th.
So any further discussion on the school calendar? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we've reached unfinished business. First, we have the 2017-2018 school budget. Okay, 2018-2019 school budget. At this point, you know, we're continuing on with our discussions with the administration. And I have to remind our members that we need to approve the budget. We have two more budget meetings, both this evening, as well as Tuesday and following Tuesday, correct?
Right, 13th and the 20th.
13th and the 20th, with a final vote required on the later than the February 20th meeting. Any members have any particular items or questions for the administration with respect to the budget as it was proposed by the superintendent?
I think my only question or concern, which I mean, I know we're in contracts.
Can you try something with an E. 2, like a river?
No, we're in leases and contracts involving a peer equipment at the elementary school, but I just, I, I just wanna task the administration in some way to help find it. And I know what we're at, and it's, it's been all weekend with this budget and looking at where we could cut and what we could do. And, yeah, I can't find it. So I, I implore us to look at technology. I mean, I don't know if there's any way we can reduce some of the technology and technology costs that we have to keep some of the personalities in the elementary school level. I know you can't really do it at all at high school levels. And I don't even know if that's possible with proper contracts and things like that. But I just know I heard that from a lot of folks out there, that we spent a lot of money on the technology and that we're gonna lose staff. So that came out of a conversation with people that they wanted to be heard of that.
Thank you.
Dr. Here, could you comment? I'm not necessarily looking to address that point.
No, I know.
But one thing that I want to address tonight, early on in our budget discussion, is there were a couple of times tonight that people mentioned that my proposal to the committee was proposing to cut arts at the middle school. And I saw an email out there, Facebook was saying the same thing. And in no place does my proposal cut any FTEs to an art teacher in the district. In the past couple of years, we pretty much retained the amount of art that we've had all along. The only difference being, at the high school, we reduced by a couple of sections of art, meaning specific classes, not teachers. And that was only because art is an elective, and fewer students were elected to take that particular course. So it kind of plays in the same playground, if you will, as all the other electives at the high school. Some years it wore run, where there's more student interest, and some years it's less. But there was no, never a proposal from me to cut art in our school department. In fact, it's kind of interesting that the day after that email, that I was aware of it, there was an arts conference, arts and education conference here at North Kingstown High School led by our own art teachers, with the commissioner coming here. And a lot of recognition from the North Kingstown School Department for the tremendous art programs that we do have, not only, you know, visual arts, but our musical is second to none, our music program is second to none. There's so many wonderful things going on here. My own kids were a big part of that, and I would hate to be a part of using that anyway. So I just want that to be said. And one more point about the office facilities. The office facilities, and this was made last time, that we are currently in, comes at a significant savings to the situation that we have. The town moved into our old office building and spent, what they spent to make that serviceable is about 15 years of us being in the current office building that we're in. So we, at that time that we made that move, that school committee said, this building is inoperable. We do not want to put any more money into this clunker of a building. We need to vacate. And we found a very good deal that helped us preserve other programming around the district. That was the whole point. The fact that it's newer does not make it look curious, it just makes it new, and it does look more professional. But that was not a hard bar to overcome considering what the other building looked like. So I just want that to be out there as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comment?
I have a question, Greg. Is the budget sessions that we have, are they open to the public?
Yeah, the next two that I just talked about, yeah, they're school meetings.
Yes.
Absolutely. They're public, maybe just like.
Thank you.
And then I just wanna, if everyone else has spoken. The town recently had a budget meeting about a week and a half ago where they talked about their preliminary process in establishing how much various town departments, including the school department, are going to be funded by the town. You know, we've always talked about that. You know, the numbers that we've been working on are bringing our budget in line with a request of 4% more in funds than we had received from the town last year. But as people clearly understand just from hearing the comments from the microphone, that did not mean that the town council will give us that. What the town requested, what the town council requested the town manager do was produce a budget with a 2% increase to various departments, including the school department. That's, you know, significantly, that would be a 2% reduction from beyond what we are doing right now, which would dip even more deeply into various programs if that's the way it came out. way it came out. That's not what they're approving, that's just what they asked the town manager to come up with. It was mentioned by one of the councilors that they would like to see a 2% cut to every single department across the board, including the school department. So, just so that you folks know what the discussions are on the town council side, those were things that were brought up at those meetings, so we don't know what's going to happen when our actual budget number comes down. But, you know, this is certainly, even as we approve the budget that we're talking about, you know, now, it's our preliminary budget, and it's subject to, you know, review, reduction, or increase, once we know what our actual funding number is going to be. You know, and as far as what it would mean if we were ever looking at going deeper, or whether we were ever, basically, a 2% cut. As far as what that would mean, I can't even say, it would just be, you know, we'd not be able to offer those types of programs that we do now.
Great. Can you give an idea of what a 1% reduction would be?
Like, we went to three...
Like dollars?
A 1% is...
Every 1% is half a million dollars. So, if we were to cut from the 4% that we have presented to you down to only a 2%, and what that means is, that means over last year's town allocation property tax. It doesn't mean the entire budget, it doesn't mean all the revenue, it just means in the contribution from town property taxes. So, if we were to take the budget that we presented to you at 4% and brought it down to only 2% of our priority, we would need to cut an additional million dollars approximately from the cuts that Dr. Roger presented to you in the last meeting.
And my second question, Greg, with the state funding, is there any way to appeal it, get in touch with, approve?
We have, and the answer, and we've done it on various fronts, officially, unofficially, and even a little bit of really unofficially, just people who know people who know people, the answer we've always received is the funding formula is a formula. The answer is the answer. If you want to change the funding formula, the general assembly needs to change the funding formula. And they have, and the Congress, they desire to reduce it. It's just... Yep, Dr. Jake?
Also, I want to make more clarification for the audience. There was a comment made about transparency and where can we see the budget. The preliminary, my preliminary budget proposal, my PowerPoint presentation to the council from December, and the list of cuts that I have proposed are all listed on the front page of our district website. If you scroll down below the pictures, you'll see a group of items that are kind of drifting across the page, and all of those items are listed there. So, and if anyone should have any questions looking at those documents, please feel free to call our offices, we'll be more than happy to help you and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on...
Mr. Jones? Yeah, I just want to clarify the point. I know we haven't listed here the budget cuts. The budget currently as submitted by the superintendent for review is a 4% increase. Put that in mind, when you talk about cuts, it's because the superintendent, in doing his assessment of the district, he came up with a number that currently we cannot afford. So, while we are, I guess, the superintendent has proposed reductions to his initial estimate, it is still a 4% increase. And while I agree, 400 pages is a lot to go through, the first couple pages, like page seven, if you go to the current FY18 budget, sort of lays out that 80% of the district budget is salary and benefits. Most of those are collectively bargained, so there's not a lot of wiggle room unless the collective bargaining agreement is changed. So, but sometimes when we ask where the money is, you have to make cuts or make reductions, you have to look where the money is. The other part, which is not, obviously, people don't see a lot, close to 9% is out-of-district tuitions. Now, it's a little bit of a dual-edged sword, because we get some tuition from other districts for RCT programs, but we have some students who take advantage of that from other districts or, or technical stuff, or in some cases, the appropriate education for them is not in the district. Those are not cheap in some cases, and those are not, obviously, something we can discretionary cut. And additionally, $1.2 million goes to charter schools. That's 3% of the students, $1.2 million. That is your cost of choice.
Thank you. And then, just one more thing, sort of following on from what Mr. Jones had said, with respect to the budget document itself, and unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of ways to simplify our budget. We have a lot of money going in and out for, you know, all the schools in the district, all the various categories. We are required by the Department of Education to use a set of uniform charts of accounts that specify various specific rules as to which lines on our budget correspond to which types of expenses. And the reason that Brian invented that program a number of years ago was to allow the North Kingstown's town, the North Kingstown school budget to be compared to, say, the Cranston school budget. And we know that we're all budgeting the same expenses in the same area, so that you'd be able to look at, for example, athletic expense in Cranston to see how much the athletic expense is in North Kingstown. It makes for a cumbersome budget document, I don't disagree. And some of the, I wouldn't even call it extreme, but some of the extra information that's in that document is an attempt to clarify and simplify the document for members of the public or anyone who wants to dive into it. For example, if you look at our preliminary budget, there's a very nice breakdown, some of the pages are breakdown by school, so you can look at, you know, each school in the district, what the number of, you know, and it has a lot of, frankly, various information, what the range of lunch populations are, what our test scores look like, so you see what you're getting out of that school, as well as the number of teachers, history of staffing levels, and then the various, you know, budget lines. And that's sort of, that's pulling out of a larger document that, the actual budget is huge, and that's what we're forced to work with, because that's the way we have to work with it. I wish there were an easier way to do it, unfortunately, there isn't. And it's one of the tasks that we, as members of the school committee, have is to sort of drill down within that budget and work with the administration, there are questions to answer, and figure out, you know, what we can move, change, and do to fit into what we have. And it's not a simple process, and, you know, when we talk about reductions to something that was done last year that might not happen next year, I am the last person, anyone who's talked to me outside or knows me, will tell you I'm the last person who wants to see anything not happen next year in the North Kingstown school department. But we say it over and over again, we can't spend money we don't have, and we're forced to work before we die. And that's our task, and then it's coming weeks, and then continuing on into the spring. Any other comments on the budget?
I was going to say for the end, but I might as well.
Sure.
So, I think it was commented on, and there was this comment that it was referencing me to the 400-page document or something like that. The budget that is published on our website is actually only 142 pages, and if you're really looking to get down into the nitty-gritty, you can probably whittle that down to maybe 60 pages of actual counts and data that's really pertinent. And so, if anyone wants to, to actually go through that, you can either give me a call or send me emails, and I would be happy to go through that line for line with you to help you understand where those expenses are going, and how, you know, how those expenditures work. But I want to say that probably 80% is going to salary and 9% is going to Odyssey Tuition, is probably another, I don't know, 5 or 6% that is going to regulatory required things. It leaves very, very, very little for these, I don't even want to say discretionary, because that makes them seem medial, but they're definitely not medial, but for these other things for us to consider. So, I just, I hope that everyone's mindful of the incredible amount of work that goes into this budget. I would like to thank Mary King and her staff for the tremendous amount of work and detail that goes into this budget, and for her answering all of my relentless questions this week. She always has every answer to every single question that I ask, and I, this is what I do for a living, I look through budgets and financial statements and balance sheets, so I'm very comfortable with looking at a budget and trying to determine where we can make cuts and where we can't. And I'm telling you, this is as lean as it can get, and to hear that we may be facing cuts from the town is literally, it makes me feel sick to my stomach. So, I hope that we don't. But I just hope that everyone is mindful, really, of how intricate this process is with so many different moving parts, and just recognize the amount of work that goes into that.
Thank you. And with respect, we're listening, to reaching out to members of the town council, I know the answer that's always given by members of the town council, and they're 100% in their act, is if you reach out to members of the town council with respect to school issue, you're going to hear that they have no control over what happens in this department. And that is 100% in their act, except that the budget decision that they make in a few weeks has everything to do with the decisions that are made by them. I understand the reason that they answer it the way they do, and I just would say to anyone who's reaching out to the council to say just what I said, which is, we understand that you don't have control over how the money is spent. However, you do have control over how much money there is. And so, the conversation needs to be for them to understand that if you support education in this town, and you want to see the North Kingstown school department remain the award-winning, the extra regular, you know, full-student experience, life-building district that we have, and that was very in particular, so I hope it doesn't get quoted directly. That wasn't my best phrase. We need to continue to fund it, and we are doing what we can to be fiscally responsible. The budget that we are looking to present has major reductions in employees throughout our district. We are doing what we can to save money where we can do it, and we are making decisions that are extremely difficult. And I hope that that's pursued by the council, and I hope that it's in their minds as they go through their own budget process, because it's extremely important that we all, you know, have a full understanding of what we do.
I have one last clarification. There was comments like about the video from the last meeting, and I apologize for that, that was a technical error the first 10 minutes. We didn't think it was broadcasting, we reset it, and then everything else came up on the street. It turns out that that was preserved, and it was clipped to the rest of the street. So, the full meeting of our last school committee meeting with all citizens' comments is up on our website and has been for several days. So, just want everyone to get with that.
Excellent. Anyone thought that was a grand conspiracy? We apologize, there's none. Mistakes can be made. Okay, I think we've reached tonight's discussion of the budget, and we have a lot more. Anything on CIP, Disney Bar, Refriger Bar? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, again, in the spirit of saying, if you're interested, it's out there. I think right of the 400 pages is the meritorious budget, and the difference of that is, it also goes into details, some history of town and school appropriations and the levy, and so it has a lot more historical stuff in great detail. I know there's discussions in different places, and it's a thing from the governor and everything about, you know, all Rhode Island schools are falling apart and everything, and regions of people have just been running around not paying attention to get to that place. I would say if you go look at pages 64 through 118 of our FY18 budget, and we have a Facility Subcommittee, which we have representation of, people who do a lot of diligent work, it outlines in great detail all the capital needs of our district by priority, by building, by location, you know, you name every which way you can probably classify stuff, it is there. And then, on 119 and 120, it talks about the items that we have been able to address, given that in most years, we've been given no money for capital. So, it's been fixed through either finding, savings, and other places, and none of that. But the suggestion that problems aren't being identified, aren't being tracked, aren't aware of, aren't being studied, you know, we have a long-term infrastructure plan about becoming newer and fewer and hopefully posturing the district for many years to come, so we should minimize in the future. But ultimately, you still have to pay to replace stuff. So, I just want to make it clear, maybe some people suggest that the school department isn't paying attention or prioritizing or listing. There's 50 pages of all that, but again, you still have to have the money to make those efforts.
Thank you. Next item is the second reading of the policy. I should ask for a motion to table this item for a future meeting. We're going to make, I think, a revision and bring it back. So, if I could have a motion to table item V1?
So.
Second.
Not my revision, nothing crazy. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have reached the end of our agenda, so if I could ask for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming and speaking, folks.